Sorely area, I don't know. The McSorely area in the bottom left, McSorely.
Good evening, this, welcome to the Kent City Council meeting. Uh, day is Tuesday, June 20th. We're gonna get started here. Uh, first, I'm gonna ask you to stand as we do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kim, let's do roll call, please.
Thank you, Council President Mayor Ralph, Council President Boyce,
Yeah.
Councilmember Fincher, Councilmember Core,
Here.
Councilmember Larmour,
Here.
Councilmember Michelle, Councilmember Thomas,
Here.
Councilmember Troutner,
Here.
Thank you.
Ain't it bad? Don't worry about the baby. We love babies. She's fine, okay? Don't worry about her. Okay. Any changes to the agenda? Pat?
No, sir, I have no changes to the agenda.
Okay. All right, I'm asked for a motion for the general as is.
So moved.
Second.
Halls in favor, sixty-five percent, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Our polls. Let the record show the gen- agenda pass. We're gonna move on to item number four. We have, uh, public communication and, uh, we have a proclamation that I would love to read tonight. And, uh, is Leslie Mackey here?
There she is, okay.
You wanna come up to the front here, please? As I read the proclamation, please, Leslie? Alrighty. Oh, you gonna bring me some food?
Yeah, come on.
I'm so happy the mayor's not here tonight. Oh, this is all me? I don't know about sharing, but, uh, I'm the mayor tonight, so that's okay. All right, let me read this proclamation, okay? All right. Whereas for the past thirty years, Macarena Bakery has been a core institution for those in King County region who appreciate exist- existent, I'm not pronouncing that right, locally sourced bread and value the way food bring community together. And whereas they choose to join the city of Kent community basing a production facility and a, and later a cafe in the heart of Kent industrial district, supporting our local economy by employing nearly three hundred, three hundred resident from the Puget Sound region. And they remain a steadfast in their commitment to using local product as much as possible as they continue to grow their business even further. And whereas the city of commit- committed Macarena Bakery on the milestone of thirty years of outstanding service, steadfast, steadfast commitment to the community and thanks them for their heartfelt contribution to the city. Now therefore, I Dana, the rep ma- I'm not Dana, but I'm speaking this for, huh? Mayor Kent do hereby proclaim June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three as Macarena Bakery Day. How about a big hand? I'mma, I'mma ask you to go up here and I'mma give you an opportunity to say a few words. What do you want, huh? Just don't take the food, okay?
Just right here?
Yes, yes.
Hello, um, uh, my name's Leslie Mackey and I am the founder of Macarena Bakery. So we started at thirty years ago in Belltown, a small, you know, the small neighborhood of Belltown. And, uh, there wasn't much shaking around there. Um, the neighborhood has grown and grown. In two thousand, we have opened, you know, three or four different cafes, uh, in the last, uh, twenty years. In nine, in two thousand seventeen, we moved to Kent. We moved our, our production facility to Kent and have really enjoyed the support that we've gotten from the city of Kent. And so we thank you very much. And, um, and now we're opening our sixth cafe over in Maple Leaf. So we continue to, to grow and to create community partners. And, um, I, I never wanted to be a flash in the pan. I always wanted to be an institution and, and I think thirty years pretty well, pretty well says that. So, uh, August twenty-seventh, we're celebrating our, our thirtieth anniversary, so. Thank you, yeah, thank you.
How many of you have eaten that before? Raise your hand. That is not enough people. Can you give them your address?
Yes, so our-
Please, give them your address.
So we have a small cafe that's open seven to two, Monday through Friday in Kent. It's located at one nine two, one five, sixty-sixth Avenue South. So our production facility is adjacent to it and then the cafe is, is, is right next to it. And, uh, we'd love you to come join us.
Let me tell you, great food. So I'm gonna, my councilman, let's take a picture. Come join me down here, please. We're gonna take a picture here, please.
Okay, perfect. I know, had I known it was a big party, I would've poured.
Okay. Okay, that was fun. Please, if you haven't eaten there, we have opportunity to eat in there. Please go and, uh, great food, great food. Okay, let's move on to our next, uh, presentation here. And it's, uh, a presentation to the Kent, City of Kent, charitable contribution to the committee donation to Sound Generation Meal on Wheels program. And I think we have a check for them, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
We have a representative?
And I wanna call, is Dale in the audience tonight? Dale Hoover? Come up here, please, sir.
Yeah.
All right. We're gonna present you guys with a nice check tonight in amount of two thousand and five hundred dollars. You can put this in your ATM, how about that, okay? Let's, let's, we'll take a picture.
I don't know where the city of Kent.
Oh, this way to the middle.
Oh, I see.
Can you guys do the picture?
I wanna thank the city for the check for Meals on Wheels program. But I'd like to enlighten you a little bit about the program. Uh, in the city of Kent, you are number one in the county of receiving a nine hundred meals a week that we provide through the senior center. And we are providing these to senior elders that are in need of that, of meals. And of those meals that go out to these seniors, eighty-two percent of them have come through a medical recommendation. So either a hospital or a medical facilities has recommended the Meals on Wheels program for them. Just so that you know, it's for a person that's sixty and over with a medical condition where it's difficult for you to prepare your own nutritious meals. And one would get fourteen meals a week. Uh, there are thirty meals to choose from. So with this check for twenty-five hundred dollars and the rising costs of the ingredients of meals, uh, last year we did five hundred and sixteen thousand meals in King County that we put out, okay? So needless to say, we, we certainly can, uh, use any donations that you can, if you think about with Sound Generations. We greatly appreciate it and certainly wanna thank the city of Kent for what they do. They are, been a stalwart for that. Not only do, uh, we operate the Meals on Wheels program in the city of Kent, but we also do the Hyde Shuttle, so we take people to and from anywhere in the city of, of Kent. And also we have volunteers that take people to medical appointments. So, uh, Kent is a, a frontrunner for us. They are the ones that, uh, I use as a speaker throughout the county to, uh, highlight the, how our interaction is with the city of Kent, how we are partnering with them. We're just really a dotted line organization to the city of Kent. And I wanna thank you for this. It'll go to buy some more meals for people in need. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Alicia, Alicia, you wanna say a few word, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I just wanted to add just a few things about the Kent Employees Charity Committee. Um, we put together a fundraiser and, um, the Kent employees purchased plants and donated money of just of their own accord to raise this money for this charity. And we appreciate all the employees here and, um, really appreciate what Sound Generations does. And just wanted to say thank you, um, as well from our committee. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for this Kent City employee. You guys did an awesome job. Alrighty, that was exciting. Okay, let's move on. Uh, and our next item, we have community events that goes on within the city. So I'm just gonna list a few, uh, that's going on at the Showware Accesso Center. So on July eighth, we have the Wolf Throwdown with Tim McGraw, Russell Dickerson and Cassie, Cassie Ashton and Dalton Dover. That's on July eighth. On September ninth, we got Gerardo Otez. On October fourteenth, we have, I wish I could read this, but I can't. I don't wanna mess it up. Well, there is a tour on October fourteenth, I'm not gonna mess the name up. November fourth, we have the Skillet and Theory of the Dead Man. And November twenty-fifth, we have Pepe Aguilar. So go to, uh, www.assessorshowwarecenter.com and you'll be able to get all of the shows that's gonna be coming at Showware Center. If you haven't been to a Showware Center concert or watched the Thunderbird, please take a moment and go there. It's a really fun event to go to. We do have, uh, Councilmember Fincher, who is on the line here. And you have anything you wanna share with what's going on in the city? Councilmember Fincher?
I do, I wanna remind people that we have our series of concerts going on. So that's Wednesday afternoons up at Reef, uh, up at West Fenwick Park, up on Reef Road. And that one is especially great for kids and families. And then we have Wednesday evening, which they call date night, over at Kent Station. And then, of course, we have Thursdays up at Lake Meridian. So just wanted to remind you of that. And we have the Fourth of July Splash coming with the Fourth of July. And a quick reminder that, remember fireworks are illegal in the city of Kent. That is it.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Or any other council member, anything you wanna share, what's going on? Okay, alrighty, thank you. We're gonna move on to our next item in our agenda. And we have the public safety report from Chief Padilla. Chief Padilla?
Good evening. Thank you, Council President, members of the council. It's my pleasure to bring tonight's report. Um, and as you can see, I know the audience at home can't see, but our, our chambers is filled with, uh, well wishers and family members of all the presentations we have today. We have quite a few honors, uh, so much so that we've asked Yalene to come help, uh, hand out the hardware. So let's get right to it. First up, we wanna introduce and conduct the swearing in ceremonies for two of our newest officers, two lateral officers. If I could have Officer David Doucette and Officer Brandon Lyon, please come forward. So as I noted, uh, these are lateral officers and more specific, they're in-state lateral officers. And we've talked about the value in bringing in-state laterals here, uh, their ability to assimilate and adjust because they know the laws and they're certified in the state already. Um, their training time before they go solo is more in the ballpark of three to four months versus twelve to eighteen months for an entry level officer. So it's a huge benefit. Uh, we work hard to recruit them to our agency. So first up, on, um, the audience is right, uh, council your left is Officer David Doucette. We, uh, David was born in Cheyenne, Wyoming and grew up in Denver. He went to the University of Colorado and Adam State University. Uh, he is married to his wife, Kim, and has his daughter Nicolette Doucette Harrison, son-in-law Bill Harrison, and son Cole Martin and grandkids. I believe a lot of whom are here today. We'll let you introduce them. Um, before, uh, KPD, David has an extensive law enforcement career. He was a police officer in Colorado, uh, for several years. He was, uh, then lateral to Seattle PD from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand twenty-two. And most recently served with the Snow Quanby Police Department before coming to Kent. David chose Kent because, uh, for twenty years in Seattle, he was a detective and that's what he loved. Coming to Kent, uh, through the direct appointment program that we have here, uh, gets him back in that track of being detective, which is, I believe, how he'd like to finish out his career. Um, one of the, he also noted that one of our commanders, Commander Phil Johnson, promised him that there would be no better working environment than at Kent PD. Uh, David enjoys coaching youth football. He is a drummer in a band called, I might get this wrong, Lungren Pass, and is an avid scuba diver. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer David Doucette. David, would you, uh, like to call out your family and attend today?
My wife, Kim, my son Cole, my daughter Nicolette, there's my grandson Tracy, and in the stroller are twin babies, Taya and Toriana. And my son-in-law, Bill.
Next up, let me tell you about, uh, Officer Brandon Lyon. He is a lateral from the Clyde Hill Police Department. Uh, he was born in, uh, Camare- Camarelo, Texas, uh, California. I was gonna say Texas, I don't know why that. Uh, he's, he was in the military, uh, family and moved to Kent at a young age. He lived in Bonnie Lake until he graduated there in two thousand fourteen. After high school, he enlisted in the United States Marine Corps as a field radio operator and held the rank of sergeant. He was stationed in Iwakuna, Japan and other places, uh, throughout his career there. And he is married for two years and has a ten-month-old son. Before KPD, Brandon was with Clyde Hill, as I noted, where he served for roughly four and a half years. He chose Kent, uh, because he grew up in the Kent Auburn Valley area. Uh, he said that Kent PD is a tight-knit family, family-oriented, and has a great ties with the community. Says Kent PD has great reputation amongst law enforcement in the Pacific Northwest with very supportive leaders. During his time in the Marine Corps, Brandon had the opportunity to travel to many different countries. Uh, and then, uh, while in Japan, he summited Mount Fuji twice. Ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen, Officer Brandon Lyon. Brandon, you wanna, you wanna introduce your family?
My wife Hannah, my son Benjamin, um, my dad Mike, Mom Michelle.
Welcome, welcome. All right, Councilman President, that's a wrong word. President Boyce, do the honors. My favorite council president.
I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance
To the United States of America
The State of Washington
And the City of Kent Now I will uphold the Constitution And the laws of the United States And the State of Washington Now I will obey the rules and regulations Of the Kent Police Department
All right. You know, I was asked about doing our swearing ins. A lot of departments do them privately, internal. Um, and we showcase ours for the public. These are public servants. Uh, we think it's very important that everyone in the community get a chance to see the officers as they start their careers here. So to answer, put that question to rest. All right, next up, more good news. I just wanna announce promotions of, uh, to our finest from the rank of officer to the rank of sergeant. Sargent's are our first-line supervisors. Uh, they're the ones out there, uh, with the crews, working the calls, nine-on-one, the major incidents that we have in the city. And after about, uh, two AM in the morning, they are the highest ranking person in the city. So they are, uh, the chief until somebody wakes me up in the middle of the night. But yeah, big responsibility, huge lift. Um, our department goes where our sergeants lead. And so huge responsibility. Just wanna congratulate Sergeant Doug Whitley and Sergeant Corey Chapman. All right, next up, I'd like to hand out some life-saving awards. If I could have Corrections Officer Scott Colleen and Corrections Officer Alicia Day come forward. Corrections Officer Sharika Alexander could not be here. Something about graduation and family in an important time in her life, so we fully understand. Uh, but we do wanna give her a shout out and congratulate her nonetheless. So with that, so let's, uh, let's hear about what happened, uh, this heroic action taken by our corrections officers. On March third, twenty twenty-three, Corrections Officer Alicia Day discovered an unresponsive inmate in our jail. Um, corrections officer Scott Colleen and, uh, Sharika Alexander responded to the scene to assist with CPR. It was obvious this person was in medical duress and most likely experiencing, uh, drug overdose, okay? Both, uh, Corrections Officer Colleen Alexander and Day administered a total of four doses of Narcan, uh, along with other life-saving measures and eventually revived the inmate. Uh, they put the inmate in recovery position and waited till first responders, fire, and medics could arrive to take over medical support and life-saving measures from there. We're happy to report that the inmate did survive this incident. Corrections Officers Colleen, Day, and Alexander are being commended for their quick actions and life-saving efforts that most certainly contributed to the saving of the life of the inmate. Their actions embody the Kent Police Department's mission and our value of service and our vision of improving the lives of the community members. Um, and so very proud of these, um, we are getting in the habit of giving these out, life-saving awards on a regular basis. And I think it's important to continue to have these ceremonies because, uh, while we unfortunately do a lot of, uh, these at, uh, for, for maybe overdoses and whatnot, these are family, these are people that have families, uh, parents, and it's really important. Besides that, this really embodies why we are in this job. One of the core tenets is safety and, and saving lives. So very proud of our correction staff and in particular, uh, Officers Colleen and Day and Alexander. So with that, I will present each of you with your plaque. We got a plaque for the trophy room. And they each get a ribbon, uh, that they can wear on their.
I have my wife Michelle, my son Kevin.
Got it. All right. Another life-saving award. I'd like to call up Officer Matt Fisher. Um, joining him in this honor are three civilians as well, Martin Flores, Hector Gomez, and Phil Zegler. They could not be here tonight, uh, but we do rec- wanna recognize them for their actions and show our appreciation. So on this incident back on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, um, they responded to a semi truck that had run into the cement barrier at, uh, near the area of two sixtieth and Pacific Highway up on our west hill. Uh, what ended up turning out was that the driver is having a medical, uh, emergency, a heart attack. Uh, and so people responded, including the three, uh, community members that we have noted there. Driver's unresponsive, did not have a pulse. Uh, and the three, uh, bystanders there went to work doing CPR as best as they could. Fortunately, Officer Fisher was close by. He responded quickly, he took over CPR efforts, um, conducted CPR, doing chest compressions for several minutes. for several minutes before fire and medics could respond to take over. In that time, the civilians, Martin, Hector, and Phil, also assisted by conducting traffic control there. As you can imagine, it's a high-volume roadway, and so there's always a threat of getting hit. The regional, Pigeon Sound Regional Fire Authority and King County Medics did arrive and took over life-saving efforts. And very pleased to announce that the driver regained his heartbeat and was transported to the hospital for district treatment and ultimately survived and recovered. And we have Mr. Masters here tonight, and we'll get to him. This situation could have very easily ended in tragedy in several different ways, but the outcome is what we would hope for, where everyday citizens recognize an opportunity to intervene and help save a life till first responders can get there and take over. That's how the system is supposed to work, and it did that day. Martin Flores, Hector Gomez, and Phil Zegler are being awarded the Chief's Award of Citizens' Commendation, the highest honor that we have for civilians in our city. We'll get them their plaques at a later time. In addition to that, Officer Matt Fisher is being awarded the Life Saving Medal. And this is his second Life Saving Medal, ladies and gentlemen. He's been here before, so it's just that kind of officer. All four exemplified courage and caring and took extraordinary action to save the life of Mr. McMasters. So I'm gonna present the award, and then I want to call our guests up here.
No, wife's at home with the ten-month-old, and I hope he's sound asleep.
All right, well, I'd like to call the McMaster family up. I believe they'd like to say something.
I'm Shelley McMaster. Gentlemen, Mark, who's like Matt's name. Our family is forever grateful. The day could have been so good. That's a heart attack, totally unexpected. And Matt was there. Hard to mark to both of the words because he doesn't remember the day.
I don't remember any of it. There's not enough words to say.
Yeah.
So Mark, we have a business called Quality Towing. We've had it for 30 years. And Mark walked behind the wheel when that happened. And so on behalf of Quality Towing and McMaster, I'd like to present a check to the Kent Police Foundation. I'd like to give it to you.
That's outstanding, outstanding.
Love that stuff.
Yes.
I better not lose this. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a donation to the Kent Police Foundation. It's a charitable nonprofit run through the department for $10,000.
Oh, wow.
All right. Last of the awards, but certainly not least. Can I call up Officer Jonathan Silas, please? Jonathan is receiving the Chief's Award of Exceptional Duty. It's one of the highest honors you can get in the police department for courageous actions. And this truly was one. I look back on this situation, and it could have very much ended in tragedy in multiple ways, not only for the offender that was involved, but also for our officers. So I'm very thankful for the actions of Officer Silas, and I'll explain what he did. Back on March 7th, 2023, Officer Silas and Officer Anthony Minos responded to reports of suspects damaging property at the Meridian Car Wash there up at the top of the hill at 240th. They were associated with, the suspects were associated with two vehicles in the parking lot. When officers arrived, they attempted to contact the first car in that lot. And I'll give you a guess what happened. Yeah, they quickly sped away, which means they were not pursued. It's not allowed by state law. The officers did not, were not deterred. They went to the second vehicle, and they were able to make contact with the suspect in that car. He got out and took off on foot, which we can pursue on, and so we did. Foot pursuit ensued. Officer Silas Minos were able to capture the offender in the 711 parking lot nearby. It says here that Officer Silas performed a takedown maneuver and got the suspect on the ground and in control. They detained him in handcuffs, and while the officers were frisking him for weapons, so we make the arrest, we handcuff, and then we start searching for weapons. While that was beginning to occur, the offender was able to reach in the back of his waistband, obtain a firearm, a pistol, and was able to rack a round into the slide of the pistol and point it at Officer Minos. Without hesitation, Officer Silas responded, taking control of the gun, pinning it to the ground, using his skill and technique to get that away from the offender. There was some more resistance that occurred, and the offender tried to run a second time. Ultimately, they were safely able to get him apprehended and were able to prevent him from causing death or serious bodily injury. Like I said, this could have ended in tragedy several ways. It could have ended in tragedy for our officers, but also for the offender, because had the officers chosen to use deadly force in that encounter, it would have been authorized. And so I thank my stars, and I pray, and all those good things that this turned out the way it did. And we want to recognize and celebrate that courageous effort and that professionalism on the part of Officer Silas, so he is receiving this high honor this evening. Well, congratulations. It should also be noted that Officer Silas has won the Most Manly Beard Award several years in a row. I can't grow one like that, it's a pretty good. All right. As many of you recall, we had our first-ever gun buyback event held on June 3rd. We had it up at our East Hill Training Center. That was a successful event, and I wanted to report back on some of the results. We were able to recover 82 firearms that day. Those firearms included 27 rifles, 20 shotguns, two muzzle loaders. I didn't know those were still out there, but they are. I guess that's a hobby, so not surprised. 12 pistols and 21 revolvers. Eight additional BB guns were turned in, or pellet guns, and we handed out $8,250 worth of gift cards for those surrendered weapons. Councilmember Michelle, who is on vacation currently, wanted me to pass on a huge thank you to the team for pulling off the organization and the planning coordination of the event. And there was a lot of employees that went into making that happen. So, great event, and we're glad that we were able to assist in getting unwanted firearms out of the streets there, so. Red light cameras. So, as many of you will remember, last year, the City Council approved the expansion of our red light camera program. We're adding an additional six cameras this year, and the first two of those intersections are now ready to go. So this is your public notice, fair warning. The warnings began last week on the 15th, and real tickets start getting issued on July 16th. So the intersections that are activated now are 116th Avenue Southeast and Southeast 240th Street, all directions, and then 68th Avenue South and South 228th Street, all directions except for northbound at that intersection there. Fines for tickets are $136, that's the bad news. The not-so-bad news is it does not go against your driving abstract and will not impact your insurance fees. And I look at it as good news. The funding goes to support criminal justice in the city, and it specifically goes to pay for our body-worn cameras for the police officers that are out on the street, so our body-worn camera videos.
Chief, I would add that, yes, the council do approve those, and as a City Council member, they don't discriminate, because I've been written a couple of those as well too, so.
Just on the record, so.
Yes. Feel free to help us support body-worn cameras in the city of Kent. Not really, just kidding. And so there's an update on that. Last part of my report, illegal street racing has been a very intense issue recently in our city. Your chief, we responded. We have been conducting multiple racer emphasis over the past few weekends, and I wanted to report on some of the success there. As you know, we have large presence that continues, and we've been having officers come in on overtime to work these events on the weekends, so we've had some success. I also want to recognize that we put out a call to our neighboring agencies, and we received assistance from Washington State Patrol, Ritten PD, Tuck Willa PD, and Auburn PD with this effort, because it is a regional problem. So with that, what have we done? During the emphasis, we disrupted several races each night on every weekend. We contacted over 143 racers and racer attendees. We made 26 arrests for multiple violations, everything from DUI to racing to race attendance and others. We filed an additional 14 criminal cases, issued over 40 tickets, impounded several vehicles, and recovered at least one stolen vehicle along with at least one firearm that was unlawfully possessed during the events. We will not be stopping anytime soon. This will be a sustained effort throughout the summer and then some, and we will continue to find creative ways to address the problem. But the word I want our community here is that we are doing everything we can with the resources we have to try and impact this problem. As you know, it is often very violent at these events. And want to recognize the efforts of Commander Bava and our sergeants for overseeing the effort and the efforts of our prosecutors for ensuring that we put together solid cases and make sure that the backend of this is being taken care of in terms of the accountability piece through our courts. So that is the update on that. And that completes my report. Council President, if there are any questions, I would be happy to take them.
First of all, thanks to you and your team, all you guys do to keep this city safe, constantly putting their life in danger and so on. I think tonight was a prime example of the hard work by our police officer and great support from the staff to be here to be part of that too. So, and I really wanted to say thank you for all the thing that you guys do. Councilman McCord.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. Thank you to all our officers. I mean, the last week and a half has been very, very active. I had a question about these shootings for our community that have gotten a lot of questions. They are targeted, right? By Chevron up there and Kent Station, and so just trying to pass that information out to our community on what's happening there.
Yes. So the shooting at the movie theater, I can confirm definitively, that was a targeted event related to a shooting in another city. That is a tragedy. A 19-year-old is no longer with us at the same. That's within a matter of time, we'll have that case solved and people in custody. So yeah, very, very much so targeted. The incident up at 108th and 240th where the eight-year-old was shot, that again was very specific to the male driver of that car was targeted. I'm not sure what preceded that, but it was clear that he was the target of that shooting. And unfortunately, the children in that car were caught up in that. And the fact that the children were in the car did not deter the shooters, which is even more mind-blowing. So, but also, we have solid leads in that case, thanks to some technology that you guys approved for us last year. I feel very confident that case is gonna get wrapped up soon as well.
Any other question for the chief? Okay, outstanding report. Thank you, sir. Thanks again to you and your team.
All right, thank you.
All righty. Okay, we're gonna move on. Phil, if you want to stay, you can stay. We got a couple of items here on our agenda. If we give a couple of minutes to clear. Julie. Okay, we're gonna move on to our next item, which is a report from the council and staff. As for the mayor, she's not off tonight. She's out there representing the city. She's at a conference in Spokane, Association of Washington City. There's no one that I can think of that work harder than anybody in the city than our mayor to make sure that, you know, we at the table, have a place at the table, and making sure we're looking at things that's gonna benefit the city. So that's where she's at tonight and probably the next couple of days. So with that said, I'm gonna look to my right, the CEO, Patrick, do anything you want to pass on tonight, sir?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Briefly, I wanted to mention that in July, we'll be coming to the council with our proposal to utilize opioid funds, and these are the funds that the city has recovered in its lawsuit against opioid manufacturers. And these funds are gonna be used, we're gonna propose to you that they be used to provide actual treatment to offenders who can't afford it, which is going to be, I think, a very unique program in the state of Washington, especially in a municipal court. So we're going to, my hope is to have our presiding Judge France, who is helping put together a program for the use of these funds, come and talk to you about the community court and how those funds will be utilized through that program. So I'm hoping that's in July. If we don't hit July, it'll be early in August, so we're working on that. Otherwise, my other updates are in the report, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Real quickly, I'm gonna have just a quick update on my reports here. First of all, we have our four o'clock meeting, where we, the committee as a whole, right, where we conduct business in the city. I chair the operation committee, so for operation today, we pretty much, we paid the bills, was something we needed to do. We did a full contract extension for IT, and then also we made some updates to our committee as a whole bylaws. I think that would have been a progress in work, but I feel like we're in a good spot now with our bylaws around that going forward. Also, we had our workshop today, which consists of the 2022 UN Finance Report and then also Transportation Sustainability. I do want to say for our 2022 Finance Report, our financial team for the city is just an awesome team. They do a phenomenal job in making sure that everything is accounted for. I would say, I think this is the 31st year in a row, I think this shared with us tonight, of receiving an outstanding Finance Report where they get audited in 31 years in a row. That is pretty, pretty powerful and a great team, just the name of through Michelle Ferguson, Paula Painter, Kathleen McConna, and then Shane Sorson. So, awesome job by the team. I would say overall for 2022, our tax revenue came in better than anticipated. Our sale tax remained strong in 2022, it came in 12% greater than 2021. BNO tax remained strong in 2022, coming just a little over the budget. And then the department, you know, they are really trying to make sure they wash their expenses, and they really came on the budget for their expenses in the department. So outstanding job. 2023, first quarter, we're off to a good start. Things seem to be aligned pretty good. So outstanding report from the finance team, and once again, kudos to them and all of the outstanding work they are doing. We also had a presentation day on our transportation sustainability. There's a lot of work when you talk about transportation, cover lots of miles in the city, and there will probably never be enough money to really take care of everything that we do. But I will give Chad and team a A-plus in all the work they are trying to do to make sure that our overlays are taken care of, that our potholes are done. We got concrete roads that will last, you know, 25 and 50 years, asphalt, chip seals, bridge repair, sidewalk, traffic signal, and pedestrian crossing, and last but not least, graffiti, right? There's a lot, and there's a lot of projects that they're working on, and as I said... There's a lot and there's a lot of projects that they're working on and, uh, as I said earlier, there would be never enough money to take care of those things, but they are really, um, uh, um, making sure the thing that is really, you know, getting to the point where they be taking care of, they are, uh, doing an outstanding job on that. And, um, as Chad said earlier, you know, he'd like to come back to us and get more money and hopefully we can be able to, uh, um, be able to grant that to him and his team. But I just want to say, as I said earlier, Chad sitting back in the back, uh, director of public works, um, your team is, is doing, always continue to do a phenomenal job and I hope you will pass it on to them for the great work they are doing. Okay, um, everybody on this here dies, they, um, you know, they are at the table. There are so many things going on, so many committees sitting on and, um, that's how we are able to get things done as a city by having us sitting at the table. This is just not us showing up every first and third, um, Tuesday to conduct business. There are a lot of things going on, on the other days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and sometimes Saturday and sometimes Sunday where you will find any council member out there, uh, really just, uh, making sure that the city of Kent have a voice and make sure we have a voice for you. Uh, so I'm gonna start here, uh, to my far left, uh, Councilman McCord, who does a lot outstanding things in the community and out there. So anything you want to share, Councilman McCord?
Thank you, Council President. I serve on three regional committees and due to it being summer, we have kind of been slow, so I think I'll have an update probably in the second meeting in July. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McCord. Okay.
I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council and unfortunately due to illness, I was not able to attend the last meeting, so I'll report in July.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Metrautner?
Thank you, Council President. I am the subject matter chair for economic and community development. Couple of things that are coming to consent calendar. We had, uh, the lodging tax grant awards for the spring of twenty twenty-three, a couple new grants that are coming to businesses within that, so pretty excited about that. Also in agreement with Connecticut West for STEM and career connected education development projects and that's in partnership with the Kent School District. Also, um, a land use implementation of House Bill fifty-five thirty-six, which is talking about, um, some of the zoning changes and helping the city to apply with newly adopted state legislation. I am also on the Regional Transit Committee. I will be heading to Spokane this evening as well and participating in RTC remotely tomorrow, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Metrautner. And, uh, Councilman Thomas, anything you want to share, sir?
Yes, very briefly, I serve on Peterstown Regional Fire Authority. I have no formal report, but we do meet tomorrow night at five thirty, Station Seventy-Eight out in Covington. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And we do have Councilmember Venture who is already at the AWC conference and, uh, anything you want to share with us tonight, Councilmember Venture?
Yes, Councilmember, I'm still actually on the road. I've stopped off on I ninety. But I am, uh, wanting to report that both the mental, uh, mental illness and drug dependency, drug dependency advisory committee and KCD, Kent Conservation District have both met within the past week. Both are looking at their annual reports and reviewing those. Both committees are, uh, looking those over in preparation for publishing and going to the King County, uh, committees for approval. Uh, we have the Arts Commission. Arts Commission had their big, uh, the big exhibit this past, we, Wednesday of last week. And so actually Wednesday before last, the, all of the pieces of art that were, uh, submitted were judged. The pieces of art that one are, are on the walls as well as the other art. It is an exemplary exhibit. If you have time or can make time, go through Centennial. Be sure to go through the meeting room also if there's no meeting in there. Beautiful art and a very, uh, eclectic exhibit is, uh, what you'd be looking at. And then Public Works, Public Works, we accepted grant money for a number of road projects around town. So, oh, and we also had a report on the RE Plus program through King County, which is going to help us. Hopefully we will get that grant, uh, would help us with recycling. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Venture. You can see that the, um, as I said earlier, that your council is hard at work at the table and making sure that, um, we represent you, uh, as being part of the city of Kent. So thanks again. Uh, we have no public hearing tonight. We're gonna move on to item number seven, which is public comments. Public comments period is your opportunity to speak to the council and mayor on issue that related to the business of the city of Kent or to agenda item council will consider at this meeting. Comments that does not relate to the business of the city or Kent are not permitted. Additionally, the state of Washington prohibit people from using the public comment period to sport or oppose a ballot measure or candidate for office. So Kim, is anybody will, uh, sign up to speak tonight?
Yes, I have five people signed up to speak. All are speaking on the same topic of the Mill Creek Track and Field. Um, and the first speaker is Sarah An-
Hello.
I'm sorry. Okay. Sarah Angel Schmessing. So if you want to go ahead and go up.
Sir, as you come out tonight, just get up here, um, tell us your name and the city where you live, please.
Uh, this is my request and reasoning for updating our field and track here at Mill Creek. I believe that we should update our track and field for many reasons, the biggest being safety issues. It is outdated, unlevel and uneven. The field floods in the winter and spring, becoming unsafe to walk on, not knowing what's underneath your feet and gets so dry in the summer that it cracks and creates a hard surface similar to that of the moons. It gets wet and muddy when it rains, making it very unsafe, um, not knowing what's under your feet. And when it dries out, it becomes hard and painful if you're wearing cleats. It's painful if you get tackled during football. It takes a toll on your body to have to go through that every day. And there is a concrete metal edge that has sunken into the ground in some parts around, surrounding the track and it's a tripping hazard. I know that the city also does not maintain the field very well because last year I pulled several track hurdles, part of a car engine and a shopping cart out of the overgrown bramble bushes. The field is very bumpy and has caused one of our football players to break his leg, resulting in surgery and another to dislocate his ankle. I myself have also been injured by this dangerous field. Last year, when the field flooded, I tripped over the half-sunken concrete and metal barrier surrounding the field and tore two of the ligaments in my ankle completely in half, resulting in my bones separating and me requiring surgery. The cost was around ten thousand dollars and it was very tolling on my body. I was not able to play football properly for six months because I did not know I injured it at first. Then I had to be scheduled for surgery and go, then go through the recovery process. I missed out on the second half of my football season because of it. And then when I was waiting for surgery and afterwards, I had to wear a boot and was not able to do the things I love like sports or PE. I also had to be away from school for two months because I had been cleared for crutches and had to get my stitches out. I missed out on sports, school and a physical education. I have also had several tick bites from that field because the city does not come down and spray for them before the start of a season. They like to live in the creek next to our field and I have been bitten more than once, requiring me to see a doctor to get antibiotics for Lyme disease and it wastes money as well. Updating our field and having them spray for ticks before the start of season would greatly impact our lives for the better. My proposal is we upgrade both the field and track to turf and we raise it so it cannot flood. I believe this would benefit everyone because other middle schools have already updated their fields and ours still has a dirt track that when dry gets in the air and makes it hard to breathe. I hope you consider my request. Sincerely, Sarah Angel Schmizing.
All righty, sir, thank you so much. I appreciate you being here and me definitely took some notes. I'm just curious, have you had an opportunity to go to the, uh, school board meeting and present your case as well?
Yes, they, uh, referred us to you.
The school board did?
Yes.
Okay, I will talk to them.
All right.
Okay, I've served in that school board for sixteen years, so I will talk to them. And that is a serious issue that track, so thank you so much, Sarah. Okay?
The next speaker is Stephen Schmessing, followed by Melinda Schmessing.
My name is Stephen Schmizing. Uh, it's a pleasure to speak with you tonight. This has been a really positive evening and, uh, I'm hoping that you'll take my comments in a positive, positive spirit because that's how they're really intended. Um, everyone associated with Mill Creek Middle School knows the playing field on the east side of the campus has fallen into disrepair and become, uh, a hazard to our students. Uh, the field floods across much of the east side and I've often wondered over the twenty-three years I've lived here, why this is both tolerable and allowed? My own daughter was injured resulting from the flood conditions and tore both ligaments on either side of her ankle. Long story short, she required surgery to repair her ankle. She missed a great deal of playing time for football and other physical, uh, exercise sports and suffered greatly from the recurring pain until the ankle was repaired. Uh, my daughter was not the only one to have been injured. A check of school records will show multiple injuries going back several years. This is unacceptable. We have insect and rodent issues due to pooling water and garbage due to poor land and water management and ever-present mentally ill drug addicts in the surrounding area, as well as spoiled food, which attracts vermin and insects. My daughter has twice been bitten by ticks in the field, not to mention the mosquitoes breeding in the standing water, which becomes fetid with disease-carrying viruses and bacteria from the aforementioned trash, medical waste and food problems. I can only imagine what the salmon in the creek think of it. This is both a city and a school district problem and it also, as we found out at the school district, uh, meeting, it's a, an Army Corps of Engineers problem and it's a muckle shoot Indian problem. So it's a big Gordian knot and a catch twenty-two. However, uh, enough has happened that myself and my family felt compelled to come and talk to you tonight and ask you to hear us and, you know, consider us for the future because, uh, you know, uh, it's time to clean it up. It really is. It's time to dredge the creek and build a dike on both sides so that the property owners on the east side aren't continually flooded every year, which I've watched them happen for twenty-three years. I feel so sorry for them. And, um, it's also an opportunity to build a path connecting, uh, James and Smith together, which would also be nice for the police because if you can add a nice straight sidewalk from one street to the other, the police could just shine a light and that would take care of a few problems that we have in that area. Uh, lastly, uh, you know, I know we have to work with a bunch of different groups, but we want to be here for you guys to encourage you to help us, help you reach out to everybody and put some pressure on to make this happen for the community. You know, this is, it's the biggest school, uh, for middle school and it's also the most culturally diverse school. And I was looking at your, your, uh, goals and stuff on the thing here and I want to help you guys live up to that by bringing this to everyone's attention and I know you guys are gonna point us to where to go next and we're gonna go there. So thank you very much for your time and I appreciate your listening to us.
Thank you for your time. Councilman Thomas, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve, I played football on that field and I, uh, ran track around the, but everything was turned around differently, uh, you know, oriented a little different back then. And we used to catch fish. We'd have fishing contests on Mill Creek. We'd stand on the bank of the field there and fish and we used to catch some pretty nice ones. Well, anyway, I don't know if the city of Kent can do anything about the mixture because that's strictly, I, I'm saying strictly because that's all I know and I may be wrong because you're the, you, you're the experienced one here. But as far as mixing city and schools, we really don't do that in this particular case like fields and stuff or French Field or Mill Creek or any of the others. And I could be wrong and I think you got the right idea because if anybody knows how to get through the school, council or school board, Mr. Boyce here is the man to talk to you.
Absolutely. And by the way, I just wanted to say that you're absolutely right. There's jurisdictional issues associated with this that make it complicated. Uh, the muckle shoots have tribal rights for the salmon because it's a salmon spawning stream, as we understood. And, um, the Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction, I believe, over the waterway, so.
There's fisheries, yeah.
But if we can, what we're really here for tonight is to just let you know that we're asking for whatever help you can give us in terms of putting us in touch with the people we need to communicate with, to present our case to them and also just to ask for your support in speaking for us as, as members of the community as well and saying that you agree it's time to do something as well, you know? And if that's all you can do, then that's all you can do.
It's interesting because over, I don't know, with a snack or whatever, we were talking in the back room, how dredging would help so much, but the muckle shoots are just giving us a fit about that and aren't allowing it. And, uh, then tonight, somebody else may have a response to what they were talking about developing some of that flood plain area on the pump station.
Thank you. Pat, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I do. Um, so our public horse director is Chad. He's in the back.
Hi, Chad.
Um, Chad is, Chad is willing to meet with you guys, uh, after the meeting out in the hallway here and give you a, an update on all the work that we have done and are doing because it is a program that we're underway with as far as dredging in Mill Creek, trying to make the water issue no longer a problem there. So Chad's the perfect one, um, to talk to you about that. It is extraordinarily complicated. The permitting process is immense and we do have a lot of partners that we have to work with to get approval of that program, but we are working on it, number one. And then number two, um, I think, I think you realize that we don't have any authority to do any type of construction work on the Kent School District at all. We don't have that authority.
We do realize that.
Yeah, and you realize that. So, so we are, um, working on Mill Creek, um, to tell you it's complicated is an absolute understatement. There's Endangered Species Act, there's tribal rights, there's so many layers, Army Corps of Engineers, you said a number of them, so many layers of regulation that we have to go through to do that, but we are working on it and Chad can give me an update, um, after the meeting if you'd like.
That'd be fantastic. And again, I want to thank you guys for, uh, what you have done around the creek with the fix to James. You guys have fixed that. It's really a good solution, putting in that concrete, it's working good. And, um, the pump station didn't work out quite like we'd hoped, but you know.
It worked out pretty good. No, it worked out really good.
It was a good try and, you know, hopefully, uh, Chad and his group learned a lot through the permitting process for all of that that we can leverage. So with that, I'll yield the podium to some other people who'd like to talk to you about the same thing and, uh, again, thank you all very much tonight.
I, I would also add to, I mean, I think Pat did a good job of talking about the issue, but to me, it's leadership, trying to get someone to kind of facilitate this here. And I think the best leadership in my opinion is the mayor. So anything that could be done from a leadership to make sure we bring right people together, I will reach out to our mayor Dana and see where she can be the one to help facilitate that.
And we have met as a family with Dana previously, uh, about the, the, the James Street flooding issue back when we did that. And I agree, she's, she's, uh, a, a good person to talk to and again, uh, thank you all tonight.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it. Okay.
Our next speaker is Melinda Schmessing, followed by Kyle Johans.
Okay.
Thank you, President, uh, Council President and Council Members. Um, I want to thank you. I'm Melinda Schmessing and I'm here to implore you to help us with the Mill Creek Middle School flooding, flooding area for safety reasons. As a mother of two girls, I expected I would be a soccer, softball, basketball, cheer, martial arts and even a soccer mom. And while all of those things are true and have been, I never thought I would, imagined at all that I would be a proud mom of a football girl. And I couldn't be prouder of you, Sarah Angel, for everything you do on the field and off the field as a mentor and as a student and as a lineman. Um, with any sport, I understand there are inherent risks of injury during practices and games. However, I'm here to discuss the safety concerns of the field that she practices on and Sarah's most serious injury that occurred after a seventh grade football practice. While clearing the equipment from the field, I watched as Sarah and a couple teammates trudged through the water, standing there that covered half their calves. There was no way to get to the equipment trailer without being in the water, nor was there any route avoiding the water to get on or off the field. My heart sank as I watched her slip and slide in the goalpost area and then not move. She has always been a very strong young lady. When she was a child, I knew something was serious if she cried. On that day, I knew it was- On that day, I knew it was serious when she stayed lying in the standing water, working hard to keep her head above it. Her buddies tried to help her off the field, and she couldn't put any weight on her left leg at all. Coach Johannes came to assist one of the boys and practically carried her to my car. That evening, we started a long and very expensive road to properly diagnose her injury, which led us to Dr. Height, an orthopedic surgeon in sports medicine in Virginia Mason. We eventually replaced two torn ligaments in her left ankle with two artificial ligaments. During her surgery and a good portion of her six-week recovery, Sarah missed several school days. Missing school greatly affected her grades, which caused a great deal more of resources on the part of the administration, the staff, and our own personal family time to reengage her and her teachers in the past due assignments, so that her grades would not be, so that this would not affect her eligibility to enter the Kent Meridian Technical Academy at Kent Meridian High School in the fall. Less serious but still requiring doctor visits, medication, and the addition of daily bug spray, Sarah has been bitten by ticks on more than one occasion. I implore you to please consider helping us with the Mill Creek Middle School track and field as far as it, sorry, the creek is concerned. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our final, or let's see, I've got two more speakers. Kyle, I think it's Johans, and Molly Rutter.
See, my name is Kyle Johannes. I'm supposed to state the city I live in, Seattle, Washington. Anyways, you just heard about the issue, and I know that y'all can't do construction on school district property, but I wanted to speak about the inequity that's going on here. That's, that's unacceptable. The investment that's going on at other middle schools when compared to Mill Creek is a glaring injustice, and it needs to be addressed. Canyon Ridge, the new middle school, has been given $6.5 million for athletic upgrades. When you combine all the money that has been given to the other middle schools, it's over $20 million to renovate the fields, and none on Mill Creek, none. Canyon Ridge will be receiving a brand-new artificial turf field and rubberized track they can use year-round. At our school at Mill Creek, our main field floods, and we're unable to use our field for much of the year, and we're unable to use our track for much of the year, forcing us to be inside for PE in limited space. In this way, the lack of care and consideration given to Mill Creek is a form of discrimination against our students. I asked the school board last week, why is it that the school with the highest population of students of color receives nothing, while other middle schools with less diversity get brand-new fields? Why is it that the school with the highest number of economically disadvantaged students gets excluded, while schools with the more privileged student body happily receive upgrades and renovations? Think about the optics of that. The response from the school board members was sympathetic, but again, representatives from KSD facilities blame the Muckleshoot Tribe, and I've heard that here tonight. And nothing personal, but the optics of that don't look good either. It feels like punching down on, on another traditionally discriminated against group instead of working with them. They also mentioned how our kids will be bused up to Canyon Ridge to share their fields for athletic practices. After the meeting, I talked to a colleague and said, what is this, the 1960s? We're still busing people around. It doesn't fix the issue of our track and field being unusable for PE games and events for much of the year. And also, it's still treating our students like second-class citizens, busing them from our school to another school just so that they can practice on a decent field. So what I'm asking is that the mayor of Kent, the city council, the KSD school board members and superintendent, representatives from the Muckleshoot Tribe, the Army Corps of Engineers, sit down together and talk about this and try to find a solution to the flooding issue. I did some research, and I saw a City of Kent Drainage Master Plan, so I know that you're working on this. It looks promising, but how long will that take to complete? And how long will our students have to suffer not being able to participate on our main athletic field, getting bused to other fields, and frankly, being in an unsafe position and risking injury and other dangers on our field? So the only thing that will heal the wound of this inequitable treatment of our students and discriminatory treatment is to fix the flooding issue and to install the same level of, same quality level of field that Canyon Ridge has received with a rubberized track and synthetic field. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Our last speaker is Molly Rutter.
Hi, my name is Molly Rutter, and I am, I live in Auburn, Washington, but work at Mill Creek in Kent. I'm here as not only an educator for the last 10-ish years, but also as athletic director. I'm speaking a little bit on behalf of a student who wasn't able to be here tonight. This is Chance Savini. He's an eighth grader at Mill Creek Middle School. He loves sports and loves trying new things. The past years, he's attended Mill Creek, and he's only been able to use his football, maybe two, football field two or three times for competition. When he's on the field, he not only plays from the heart, but he plays to represent his school very proudly. Mill Creek's field compared to others like Northwood.
Northwood.
Feel like they're on the bottom of the list, to prepare. And it's not just, it's not fair to the students. Last year, they were able to play their first game at Mill Creek, and they were excited. They were excited to play in front of their community, at their home field, but it rained many, many days before. So on the game day, it was very muddy, and there were huge puddles everywhere. They topped it out and were happy to play, as I said, so that they could play in front of their families. A couple of times during that game, they fell into water. He likes to say he felt like he could go swimming. And because of that, was soaking wet and had to sit out a few plays. After a while, he started to get cold, and he knew the best decision was to sit out before he started to get sick. Not only on game days, but there were other days where we did not have school because of the rain, and the field, and the parking lot were so flooded. This, in my career as an educator, has happened multiple times, where students don't go to school at Mill Creek and other students in our district do. And I understand, like Kyle said, that there is work and action being taken. My concern is what is being said to the students? How are we engaging with them? Because it is their community, it's their families, which they are part of your community, our community, our families. And how are we interchanging and enacting with that? So not only do we want to take steps in order to help with Mill Creek, but what are we doing to be able to come into our school and say, hey, this is what we're looking at? What do you guys think? How does this engage with you? Does this sound like this is a good next step? Is this equitable? I think you would be surprised to hear the impact, the creativity, and the love of our community that these students have. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have?
Yeah.
Hey, thanks a lot. Appreciate it, and your voice has been heard, okay? Okay, we're gonna move on to item number eight, which is the consent calendar, which consists of things that have came out of committee unanimously, or they've been thinking that has already been discussed at previous meetings. So I'm gonna ask for a motion on the consent calendar, please?
Mr. President, I would move for consent calendar to be approved, items A through R.
Second?
Have a motion and a second and a discussion? Seeing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Let the record show unanimous, pass. I'll move on to item nine, other business. We don't have any other business. Item 10, no bids tonight. We don't have executive session. And number 12, bring us to adjournment. Thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. Have a great night. Drive home safe. Thank you.